Good evening. It is 7:00 PM and it is December 28th, 2020. I call to order the final meeting for the Speedway Town Council for the year 2020. I'm Council President David Lindsay. I call the meeting to order. Welcome our other members of the council with us this evening. To my immediate right, Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my left, Vice President of the Council Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
To his left, Councilor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
And to his left, Councilor Gary Pedego.
Good evening.
Socially distancing, social distancing with us this evening is our Clerk Treasurer, Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening.
Town Manager Carlos May.
Evening.
And our Town Attorney Bob Plutter. Our agenda has been posted, which we will follow this evening. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the December 14th council meeting. Those minutes have been distributed. Any corrections? Hearing none, those will be presented, or those will be accepted as presented. Item three is a proclamation honoring Melissa Sauer for a lifetime of service, a lifetime of service to Allison's Transmission of the Town of Speedway. And with council's permission, I will read the proclamation. This is a proclamation honoring Melissa Sauer, Executive Director of Corporate Affairs and Communications of Allison's Transmission. Whereas Melissa then Lynn King Sauer, a native daughter of the Town of Speedway, was raised and where her mother still resides on Meadowwood Drive. And whereas Melissa attended Speedway schools where she excelled in her studies and many extracurricular activities. And whereas Melissa went on to study and graduate with honors from the Kelly School of Business at Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana in 1981. And whereas Allison's Transmission, a leading stakeholder, partner, and founding corporation within the Town of Speedway, Indiana, recognized Melissa's strong potential and hired her in 1981. Where Melissa has performed well in each of her career assignments, including her current role as the Executive Director of Corporate Affairs and Communications. And whereas Melissa has been significantly involved for the past 15 years in helping the Town of Speedway rebuild Main Street, parks and trails, schools and more, which has tremendously impacted her hometown. And whereas the citizens of the Town of Speedway and the Speedway Town Council wish to express their sincere gratitude and appreciation for nearly 40 years of service to Allison's Transmission and a lifetime of commitment to our community, the state of Indiana, and the United States of America. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Speedway Town Council does hereby proclaim the 28th day of December 2020 as Melissa Sauer Day in the Town of Speedway. Adopted this 28th day of December 2020 by the Speedway Town Council. Great. Councilor Rakes, I believe you have some more.
Sure. Thank you, President Lindsay. On, so Melissa actually received this proclamation. It was read to her on the, they had an event, a relatively small event in today's COVID terms. But the CEO and President of Allison read this proclamation to her. She was, I think, just flattered by it, to say the least. And she sent a letter to the council, and I'll read that now and make a couple more comments. But, "To the Speedway Town Council and the citizens of the Town of Speedway, due to COVID and the holidays, I'm not able to join you at the Speedway Town Council meeting, but I wanted to make sure that I relayed my gratitude for the proclamation of Melissa Sauer Day in Speedway. That is such a great honor. Speedway is near and dear to my heart, and as I grew up here and worked nearly 40 years in the town. The redevelopment of the town, the school system, police, fire, and of course, the people make Speedway a unique and awesome place to live and work. I'm proud to have been involved with Speedway my whole life and will continue to be a frequent visitor. And thank you for this honor, Melissa Sauer." And I had, had the opportunity to talk to Melissa the 18th, the day after she was recognized for her retirement. And she was just actually pretty emotional and just flattered by, by our recognition of her. And I'd just say, I'm sure the other councilors will make comments as well. But, and we did it at our last meeting, knowing she was going to retire. We knew we would also do this, but we couldn't make it public at that point. Without people like Melissa Sauer, who grew up here, moved away, you know, did school and that and so forth, but continued to work within the town and be involved to the level she did promoting and encouraging us to continue to develop and redevelop the town. Without people like that, we wouldn't be who we are and we wouldn't be achieving the things we are. So I'm very appreciative of Melissa's response and disappointed she couldn't be here, but understand it based on COVID and the holidays.
Absolutely. I thought that Melissa, this is a well-deserved honor bestowed on her. And, you know, she acted as a conduit of her career between Allison's and the Town of Speedway. And she was part of that force behind making the redevelopment successful. And Allison is definitely a key stakeholder in everything that we do. And representing Allison, we couldn't have had a better person in that position at that time.
One other thing I thought of is, I think back years ago, when Allison was spun off from General Motors, and they went public, eventually went public as their own organization. And they could have chosen to be, put their headquarters anywhere, but they chose to keep it here and to build on it. And they've invested in the community. And Allison, I'm sorry, and Melissa was a big part of that. You know, she, she lived and breathed this town and she deserved a lot of the credit for encouraging that to be done as an executive at Allison.
Yeah, and I believe it was a big success for both the town as well as Allison's with the help of Melissa. You know, it's very rare that you find a company of that nature have somebody from the town that breathes, that loves our town as much as she does and also loves what she did for Allison's. It's very rare. You know, I just want to congratulate her and wish all the best in her retirement, so.
Absolutely. I think it'd be appropriate if we have a motion, a second, to approve it.
I'd be glad to make a motion, you know, the proclamation.
Second? Just to make it officially official. There's been a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation. Any further comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you, Melissa. Item four on our agenda is Ordinance 1336, which is an ordinance establishing jobs and salaries to be paid to certain offices, positions, and jobs within the Town of Speedway for the year 2021. And this is on second reading this evening. And Carlos May, our Town Manager, will address this.
Thank you, Council President. As you just stated, this is the second reading of the ordinance 1336, basically establishing a 1% raise across the board for all town employees. This was read at the first town council meeting of the month. And as per rules, this is the second and final reading of it.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance 1336 as presented to us for job salaries for year 2021, second reading.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1336 on second reading this evening. Questions from the public? Questions from the council or comments?
I just want to state that we received a letter from the Fraternal Order of Police and to the councilors. This was correspondence basically based on December 14th, addressing Speedway Public Safety employees, indicating that we're not honoring the 3% salary increase and that we are offering a 1% at this time. And this was sent to us by Rick Snyder, President of the FOP.
And I also will mention that I think the entire council received an email from Parker Adams, who's the representative for local 416, which represents the fire department as well. For the public's knowledge, the council entered into a contract with both police and fire. This is our last year of the four-year contract. It was...
Three-year.
Three-year? Okay. I apologize. It was a three-year contract. And this last year was in, in the contract that they would receive a 3% raise. We met with members of the fire, or myself and Vice President Noblet met with members of the police union and the fire union in May with our clerk treasurer and forming them of the revenue within, in the town due to COVID being much less than we expected that it was to receive. And that we were, we were notifying them that we may not be able to meet that 3%, 3% raise for 2021. Vice President Noblet and Jacob Blaisdell, our clerk treasurer, met with them again in October. Jacob went over pretty much the books of the town, showing them some revenue short, the revenue shortfall that we are having. And the 1% raise that we are, that is up for vote tonight is for all of the town employees. I think it's important to note that our water, and Jacob, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, our water, street department, and sewer, as well as our clerk treasurer's office are paid, I know that the town hall employees are paid a third from water, a third from sewer, a part from the general fund. And then our water and sewer employees are paid from water and sewer funds. Street department is paid from motor vehicle highway funds and water and sewer. So well over 85% of our general fund budget pays for our public safety. We, and obviously this is kind of a difficult thing for me to say that we're giving them 1%, when we agreed to three in the contract. But COVID has really struck the town hard. Our revenue's not coming in as what we had projected. That's why we have Mr. Blaisdell in our clerk treasurer's office to lead, lead the way. And he's raised the red flag to us that the funds are not there where we can support a 3%, 3% raise. We appreciate all of our town employees. I especially appreciate our, our, our public safety daily for what they go out, especially that they faced during, within this last year with COVID. We, we do acknowledge these letters that are received. We are open to sit down to talk with, with both police and fire. I welcome them to reach out to us, to reach out to Jacob, to have conversations, to, to, to work out the, the issues that, that have arisen from this. But as an elected official, I'm speaking for myself here, but I think I can speak for the council as well. It is our responsibility to watch the funds of the town and make sure that we don't fall below that red line. And I, I think we need to be fiscally responsible. And that's why we have done with the 1% raise. If anyone would have any other comments?
Yeah, please.
I was just gonna, I, I just think that you've covered everything very well in respect to that. And that's not something that we take lightly. So that's really all I wanted to say.
I would concur with, with David and everyone's comments, but David, you spoke for quite a while there. And I think you're spot on. And I, I think it's also important to mention that there are federal dollars that were, were given to every state, on down to the county level, then supposed to come on down to the town level. And so far, we've received far fewer dollars than what we think we deserve. And we're pursuing those with, with our city, county. And those are, those are funds I know, again, I won't speak for the council either, but I don't have any doubt about the council agreeing that if, if there's a way to, to get to that 3%, we want to do that. Because we absolutely support our police and our fire and appreciate the work they do for us.
I totally agree. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1336 on second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Carlos, I think you're gonna stay up there, correct?
Correct.
Item five is ordinance 1337, an ordinance amending town, the town code of Speedway Section 12 dot 03 dot 170 relating to violations of right-of-way restrictions. Carlos?
Yeah, so this ordinance, ordinance amendment does not change the violations, does not change what it means to violate the right-of-way ordinance. It just changes the fines if you do break this ordinance. Originally, and as, as it currently stands, the initial fine, the first fine was $1,000 on the first offense, $5,000 on the second offense, and every subsequent offense. And then if the violation occurred during a specific period of time, then the initial first violation instead of 1,000 was 5,000. The amendment basically just changes those fees. So the new one would be $500 for the first instance of, of non-compliance instead of 1,000. The next, second, and subsequent offense would be $1,000 as opposed to the $5,000. But during that specific time period denoted under Section 12 dot 03 dot 190, specifically race time, in essence, that moves from 5,000 to 2,500 for the first offense and every subsequent offense. So to summarize very quickly, in essence, all this amendment is doing is changing the fines that the town is going to levy against the violator, not the actual right-of-way violations themselves.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance 1337 as presented by the Town Manager.
My second. There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1337 this evening. Any comments from the public? Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1337 on first reading, actually on one of those nights again. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1337 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes five to zero. We will not require a second reading. I'm halfway through. Item six is approval of an, of the IPL contract to convert streetlights to LED. Carlos?
Yes. So the final item that I have for the council is this LED conversion contract with IPL. Prior to my time as coming onboard as Town Manager, I believe it was early 2019, IPL and the town had negotiated the conversion of the old halogen and something hallowed. I, I don't know, I'm not an electrician. But the old-school streetlights to the new LED, which is obviously a lot more energy efficient, it's going to cost a lot less in the long run to pay the IPL bills for these. This agreement finally came to us, was reviewed by both IPL's attorneys as well as Bob Plutter, our Town Attorney, and everything looked good. So now the actual contract that is in front of you is to actually execute the agreement that was already agreed upon in early 2019. After sitting down with IPL, specifically a Vice President of Government Affairs, Clerk Treasurer, and myself, it was decided that a one-time lump sum payment would be a lot better than if we spread it out. And it would save the town approximately $13,000 to $14,000, basically in interest that we don't, don't have to pay by approving all-in-one. So again, to summarize, this is just the codified agreement put into a contract form that was already agreed upon in early 2019 by the council on IPL.
Do you know what fund this is coming out of?
Motion first.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the LED conversion contract as presented by our Town Manager.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion, a second, to approve the IPL contract this evening. Questions from the public? Questions from the council?
Got one question for you. Do you know what fund that this is coming out of?
Capital Development Fund.
Capital Development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this was, correct, Jacob, this was budgeted because they came to us in 2019, so we budgeted in 2020 for that, correct?
Yeah, actually, originally this was going to happen in 2021, but the IPL's been using MEED contractor to do this work. This is the same contract that the other, I believe Lawrence did it, but the City of Indianapolis did this. So they've been running ahead of schedule and alerted us, Carlos and I, that, hey, we might be able to do this in, in '21 if you guys can budget for it. So we did, we put it in the capital fund. And I also, I don't know, I don't recall if you mentioned it or not, but this is actually less than what we were anticipating previously. So there are some additional, yeah, so there's some additional savings in this. So we're already ahead of the budget in 2021, just a few, a few hundred thousand more to go.
What kind of timeframe are we talking about to do that work?
They're talking, what, April, sometime this spring or in the summer, so.
To start or finish?
To start.
Start. How long will it take them?
Big question. I don't know if Fred said that.
They didn't tell us specifically the amount of time. It would all be based on weather and how quickly they can get the old, sorry, and how quickly that they can get the old ones down and then the new ones up. So without having spoken to Fred at IPL, I would conservatively say six months, but it could go a lot faster if the conditions are all right. And presuming COVID doesn't, you know, further affect us into the upcoming year.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Jacob, what kind of payback were you looking at by the conversion?
So it's slightly complicated because the, the price was going to go up for communities that didn't go in on it. And I don't recall, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was not, the savings versus where the price was going to go was really significant. The savings are significant from where we were previously anyway. So it's, it's pretty good savings, just in terms of, of where we're at today. So we are going to be paying less for these. But really significant when you consider kind of what our real options were, which was either do the project or not do the project and see our electricity prices go up.
If I recall, the first year, the, because of the cost we were paying, it was going to be about the same. Then it would decrease and save, save us money for the next.
Yeah, so we've got the upfront capital costs. And when I looked at the savings versus what we're paying right now, I think it was, it was roughly a 10-year payback. And that was at the higher amounts. And we're, we're, what, 40, 50,000 below that even. So, yeah, it's, it's definitely a good deal for, for us, the environment. It's, it's a win-all around.
Yeah. If I remember right, when we approved this, the warranty for this product went about that same amount of time in terms of the payback. So, and the other, the other benefit to going this way was that the, the cost of replacement and repair for the old technology was dramatically higher as well. So this is another piece of the payback. So every light that would fail, it would come back on us.
Absolutely. So, so IPL can charge us less, in part because it's consuming less electricity now, but also because it lasts longer. And that's, it's a longer interval between when they have to go and send somebody out there to do more repair work and maintenance on it.
Does anybody know if the lighting's any brighter or any, it is brighter?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
You should definitely see a big difference. Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, Council President.
Item seven on our agenda is appointments to Speedway boards and commissions. We are going to appoint some of the boards, but we are not going to appoint all that we have in years past. There are some boards that we would like to speak to. Prior to appointments, there are some, in speaking with Kelly Turner, our Director of Communications, I think there's not been as many people has turned in applications due to COVID. I think that's due, due to COVID. A lot of people would just like to stay home. I can't say that I blame, blame them. So usually, our last meeting of the month, we spend quite a bit of time filling these boards and commissions. And we just have a select few. I believe the first of January, we'll have some more as, as the need arises for certain boards that are required to meet. And then throughout the year, once, I'm hoping 2021's going to be a much better year than what 2020 has been, that we'll see even more that we can fill. And maybe some, some more people come out and say that they volunteer. So if you are, if you are wanting to be on a board of commission, please go to the town website. There's a link there that you can fill out or reach out to a council member. Our, our information's there as well. So these few select boards, we will appoint tonight, and then we'll have some more in Jan- January and throughout the year. So we will begin with our cable commission. We have two appointments that are due up, that expire the end of this, this year. I hear any nominations for that?
Let's nominate Tim Kenya.
I nominate Theodore Howlett, and I would also move to close the nominations.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second to close the nominations for the Cable Commission. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we will then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Theodore Howlett and Tim Kenya to the Cable Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Our next board is the Redevelopment Commission. We have five members, three of which are appointed by the council and two by the council president. So I would then ask the council if they have three nominations for the SRC this evening.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Miller.
And I would like to nominate Rhonda Schwartz.
And I'd like to nominate Barry Gardner.
I'd like to close the nominations for redevelopment.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion, a second, to close nominations to the Redevelopment Commission. All those in favor of approving Rhonda Schwartz, Jennifer Miller, and Barry Gardner to the SRC signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. And for the council presidents' nominations, I will nominate Brody Duncan and Gordon Rundle to the SRC. Next is our Stormwater Management Board. We have one position that is open for that. Any nominations?
I move that we nominate Bob Stanton. And I move that we close.
My second.
Nominations.
Then a motion, a second, to approve Bob Stanton to the Stormwater Management Board. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Bob Stanton to the Stormwater Management Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Next is just an information for the councils, our Fire Mayor Board. They have one appointment for, beginning in 2021, and that is an appointment made by the Fire Department Union, Local 416. They have sent me an email today, and they are going to appoint Joe Rush to that position for that term. Next is our Police Commission. We have one appointment to that.
Mr. President, I nominate Ken Hall, and I also moved to close the nominations.
Second.
Been a motion, a second, to approve Ken Hall to the Police Commission. Any questions or comments? Then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Ken Hall to the Police Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. And I believe that is all that we will have this evening. As I stated before, council members will be reaching out to other boards and commissions that we did not appoint this evening for some further follow-up and some questions. And if you are interested, again, please go to the town website and/or contact the council. Item nine, I'm sorry, item eight. Sorry, Jacob, almost skipped over you.
Please don't.
Okay. Item eight on our agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our clerk treasurer. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the claims in front of you represent claims that we've submitted for December 12th through December 23rd. I'd be happy to take any questions or would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by the clerk treasurer.
I'll second that.
Been a motion, a second, to approve the claims as presented this evening. Any questions from the public? Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Jacob?
No utility adjustments.
Good work, guys. Anything else?
Better first.
I'll just report that our office, we've been pretty fortunate with COVID in terms of exposures. And if there was a test, it was negative. Our, our luck unfortunately came to a screeching halt this month of December. We've had a, a positive test and some exposures, myself included, that have made us kind of shift operations around a little bit. We've, we've purchased some laptops so that our employees can do work from home, so we can keep vendors paid, employees paid, continue processing everything, keep things rolling. But to be honest, it is a little bit harder with, with folks working remotely. And so what we're doing is we're kind of doing a rotating schedule. So summer in, making sure mail and those kinds of things are taken care of. So things are running, but just asking for the public's patience. If you happen to get voicemail or something like that, someone will get back to you. If they don't, you're welcome to send an email to me or call me. My information's on our website. And again, just... And again, just appreciate everyone's patience. I think most people get it and understand what we're working through. But we're going to try to go adjust our schedule just a little bit to make sure that we have operations going here, certainly for the next couple of months. That's all I have.
Jacob, I just want to mention that I heard a couple of comments from people that you guys got back to them very quickly.
Oh, good. Good to hear that.
And they saw absolutely no, you know, delay in getting answers from your department. So they're doing a great job, and I just wanted to recognize that fact.
Thank you. Yep, I appreciate hearing that, and I will certainly let the team know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is a report from our town manager, Carlos May.
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I have to say, obviously, this has been a very trying year. I believe on the whole Speedway as a municipality and as a government has weathered the storm far better than others. I think that's a testament to the clerk treasurer's office, to the council, and to all the employees. But also, I want to say in a more general sense that the town of Speedway, I think, has fared better because of the community and the people sticking together, helping out the local businesses, helping out their neighbors, helping each other out. And that's really a testament to the unified fabric of this community, which I find to be refreshing and a breath of fresh air. And so on a personal note, I want to say it's been a privilege and a pleasure, having worked here for six months, gotten to know you and the town members. I certainly look forward to many, many more years. But I want to thank the community for being so welcoming to me. Anytime I talk to, you know, neighbors or business owners, they always say, thanks for sticking it out with us. We're glad to have you aboard. Thanks for doing what you're doing. So I just want to say thank you to the community members, and that's basically it. Thank you to the council for hiring me. Thank you to the community for supporting me. And obviously, thank you to all the employees for doing such a great job, especially in this day and age. And one final note that I would add, I was unaware that this was a thing, but I've received two or three phone calls already over the weekend about the calendars, and when are the calendars coming out, and when can we pick them out? After doing my due diligence, the town itself, for the community watching it, we do not put out any calendars. That's actually a third-party organization. They do tend to send some calendars to town hall or to the annex where I'm located. But just for the community that's wondering, where are my calendars? That is not a town function. We do not put out the calendars. And due to COVID, I would assume that that company's not going to be putting out any calendars this year. But I figured, after having spoken to Jacob, and he got a lot of these calls last year, I figured I'd probably get more calls this year. So I wanted to go ahead and put that out there for the community to understand. But other than that, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carlos. Next is a report from our council members. We begin with Council Eileen Fisher.
I just would like to, as we were going through the boards and commission, thank those who volunteered, because that is a volunteer positions, that you have stepped up and helped us, the councilors here, to recognize certain areas and help us make some decisions that we need to do. So thank you for that. And then last is just want to thank David Lindsay, our president, for leading us this year of 2020. It has not been, it's just been a year of no other, so. I know he's going to pass kindly the gavel to someone, so, but thanks for your leadership. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Gary Pedego.
Well, first and foremost, I hope everybody had an enjoyable Christmas in spite of COVID and the extremely cold weather, excuse me, we had on Christmas Day. Next, I wanted to say I'm fairly positive I've never met Melissa. Don't, can't place her, don't know her, but I think that's my loss. So I'd like to say to her, thank you. The accolades that members of the council and members of town management have shared with me over the last few weeks have been many, and I'm sure those are not by accident. Those are things that come about from her hard work and the actions that she's taken over these many years. So hopefully, one day, I'll have the opportunity to meet her. In terms of boards and commissions, yes, thank you for those that have applied, but now we've got a couple more weeks. So please, 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 if you have some interest in getting involved in our town and making a difference, please apply. I think January 11, next council meeting, Mr. President, and that's when we anticipate filling the balance of the boards and commissions. So if you want to make a difference, please submit your name. Beyond that, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Gary Rix.
Just a few things here. First, there's a water main break on 10th Street. It's actually just as you're about to cross over Eagle Creek, it's a pretty significant water main break, and it happened, I think, Christmas Eve with the temperature change that Gary just referenced. And we received notice from our water department director this late this afternoon that it's 14 feet down into the ground, and so they could not, they tried, but they can't repair it themselves. We need heavier equipment and need to protect the workers when you're digging that deep with walls and that sort of thing. So they'll be getting to that. They will be laying closures. Like first and foremost, be, just slow down if you're on the street in that area just to protect the workers, and then just be patient. Those are difficult repairs, and when the temperatures are cold, it's even more difficult. I want to also thank David for this year of being president. I don't think any of us, looking back on it, wanted to be president after the fact. He's done a wonderful job of being engaged as often as he could possibly do that, holding a job, having a family, doing all the things that David does. And I just want to thank you for your, not just hard work, but excellent work.
Thank you.
And then finally, congratulate my daughter Lauren and her husband Louis for having our fourth grandchild, a little girl, on Christmas Eve. So congratulations.
Fantastic, yeah.
Next is a report from our vice president of our council, Vince Novlet.
I'd like to thank you too, David, for, you know, working beside you and the challenges that we faced with carrying on town government and in the arena of COVID. It's been very difficult and a learning situation for everybody, and I think you handled it better than anybody that I know could. It's a lot of pressure in terms of keeping people safe, but yet carrying on your work environment. I think, I want to thank the town employees for doing that. Public safety, especially policemen out there, making sure that, you know, that they're protecting the public and making sure that they stay safe at the same time, along with the fire department, same thing. Again, making sure that they can respond to runs and yet maintain their safety and so that they can be out there the next day. I also want to thank the people of Town of Speedway for supporting our restaurants and businesses. It's the same thing. It's what do you do? I mean, you have to maintain your safety of not catching a very contagious disease and then, but yet you want to support the businesses that they put their money on the line to be in the Town of Speedway. And it's not anybody's fault out there, but I think that the town has done a great job of maintaining that safety, but yet support, and it's a balancing act between those two. So after tonight, David, you can take a load off your shoulders. Thanks again.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words. Second to the last item this evening is my report. I'd like to thank the council, one for, this is a group effort. I just happen to be the guy that hits the gavel twice a month. And I'd like to thank not only the town employees, but the department supervisors who've put up with phone calls for me more than they probably want to, for their leadership. It's true, I think this town operates as well as it does because of the employees and the department supervisors that we have that help run this town on a day-to-day basis and make this town what it is. That goes from everything from our street water, civil parks, police, fire, to our schools even. You know, we truly appreciate all the hard work, and like Gary said, if I had known January 1st, when I began my presidency on the council, what 2020 was going to hold, I wouldn't have believed you. But we have made it through, and I truly believe 2021's going to be, well, has to be better than 2020. So I want to thank my family, my wife, for putting up with me being gone so long hot. So greatly appreciate that. So I'm going to stop. So our final agenda item this evening is appointment or election of officers for next year. I will take nominations for president at this time. And I will nominate Vince Novlet for council president.
I move that we close the nominations.
It's been a motion and a second to appoint Vince Novlet as council president next year.
And I accept.
Well, we're going to have a vote, Vince.
Okay.
Does he have a chance to?
I can deny, I can walk.
Let's have a vote and see what happens, shall we? All those in favor of appointing Vince as council president next year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries five to zero. And then we will take appointments or nominations for vice president.
I would like to make a nomination, Gary Rix, for vice president.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve Gary Rix as vice president of our council for next year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen, congratulations. And with that.
Yeah. It seems like a year or two ago, that gavel was thrown at someone, but you're being very kind.
And with that, president-elect, I will allow you to close the meeting this evening.
Well, thank you very much. First, I want to say that I think it's an honor, and the way that you handled 2020, you set a high bar in relationship to handling the business of the town and moving projects along at the same time and dealing with everything that we have to deal with. David, it was really a learning experience, and definitely, like you said, it is a team effort, and I appreciate Eileen and Gary and Gary and everything that you guys to make meetings and take time out of your busy schedules to address issues of the town and move forward with it. Not having anything else to say other than thank you for the confidence in moving forward here for 2021. It's 7:45, and I adjourn the meeting.